Good evening, everyone. The time is now 6:05 PM and we'll go ahead and get this Planning Commission meeting started. Just as a reminder to our commissioners, when you're speaking, please make sure to unmute your microphone so those on the broadcast can be heard. The public who did not register in advance can watch the live broadcast on the city's YouTube channel. For live Spanish translation services, please dial extension 720-386-9023 and use code 104091* for Spanish translation services.
I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Will staff please do a roll call?
Commissioner Sanchez.
Present.
Commissioner Van Huisen.
Present.
Commissioner Biltoff.
Present.
Commissioner Scheckter.
Present.
Commissioner Eggleston.
Present.
Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Will everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I please have a motion to approve the May 6 meeting minutes?
Second.
Could you please restate that because there was multiple...
I believe Deb had the motion and I have the second.
So a motion by Commissioner Ingleson, a second by Commissioner Sanchez. Please open electronic voting. The motion passes. Five yeses, zero noes, zero abstain. The first case before us this evening is DIA PUD Zone Document Amendment III. I will open the public hearing for this case and ask planner Dalton Gera to please announce this case.
P U D A 250002. Becknell Industrial is requesting approval of an amendment to the Nexus North at DIA PUD Zone Document Amendment Number Three to allow warehouse and distribution land uses and reduce the maximum front yard setback for Planning Area Three. The subject property is located at 17010 East 88th Avenue.
Sidetrack there. At this time, I'll ask the applicant to come forward to address the commission with a staff presentation to follow.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission and city staff. My name is Abby Kirkbride and I am Land Use Counsel to the applicant, Becknell Industrial. That is the applicant behind the PUD amendment under your consideration tonight, which I think you will find, as we describe it, is very minor in nature. Thank you for taking the time to hear our presentation, which will be about 15 minutes in length. I am joined by Jake Burks, a representative from Becknell via video conference, and by Fabby Hilliard, another member of the project team. To begin our presentation, Jake is going to provide some additional information on Becknell, their long-term investment in Commerce City, and also give a project update on Nexus North. All right, Jake, we can see you now.
Can he hear?
Couldn't before, but I can now.
Sorry, can you hear me now, Jake?
Yes, I can now.
Great. I believe we can hear you now if you want to speak.
Hello, everyone. Sorry I could not be there in person, commissioners, as well as any members of the public that are there. My name is Jake Burks. I am presenting on behalf of Becknell Industrial. We are the applicant as well as developer for the Nexus North PA Three parcel. This parcel was purchased by us and a capital partner back in 2022. Becknell is a nationwide developer with a long-term commitment to the city of Commerce City. Our company was started in the 90s with multiple long-term capital partners who have allowed us to execute complex developments across the country and more specifically in Commerce City. Becknell likes to think of ourselves as community partners, not just developers. We see the Nexus North PUD as a gateway to the Denver International Airport, which is reinforced by the comprehensive plan that Abby will go over some of the qualifications in which we meet that comprehensive plan, but feel that our goals for the property align with that comprehensive plan pretty well. We seek top-quality tenants, as we'll go through in future slides, and hope to bring some more of those tenants with our existing relationships to Commerce City as part of another successful development. As mentioned, we have worked through five different developments in this specific park, bringing McLean, GE High Air, Lowe's, and Amazon into Nexus North. And we believe that this site is a prime location for one of those future opportunities. And I mentioned before that we are not just developers but community partners. We have invested in Nexus North through not just impact fees, but also providing connections for water and sewer lines from existing improvements in 88th Avenue into the existing park, and we hope to try and mitigate as much public impact as possible with this development. We are also seeking to provide enhanced landscaping and pedestrian access along 88th Avenue, which you can see in some of our plans, and we will try to follow as many lead certification and environmental checklist items as we can through our development and try to provide a top-quality product for the Commerce City market. So not just a plain vanilla warehouse building, but ultimately based upon our clients' needs can be as complex as a modern warehouse can get. We are going through this application with a couple updated reports and amendments to existing documents. So our trip generation letter provided with this application so that through the existing buildout of the park with buildings that went up, the traffic counts actually went down pretty significantly compared to what was approved with this PUD document back in 2018. So we really feel that this park is doing all it can to try and mitigate some of the existing traffic impacts exiting the park and entering the park. Ultimately, we hope that this project will be just another in the long line of successes that Becknell has worked with the city of Commerce City to attain and know that partners in the Planning Commission Board will help us ensure that we are meeting and/or exceeding any standards within the Commerce City code. I will hand it back to Abby at this point to kind of go through some more project specifics, but I will remain on the line to answer any questions or talk further about the project as needed, and I appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you, Jake. That is a great segue to talk about the parcel underlying tonight's PUD amendment request. As previously noted, this parcel is referred to as PA Three, which stands for Planning Area Three. It's an approximately 18-acre parcel at the very northeast portion of the Nexus North Development at the corners of East 88th Avenue and Buckley Road. I'd like to note two things from the site plan regarding the owner's anticipated development of this site. If this PUD amendment is approved, the owner will seek a buildout of the multimodal pathway indicated with that call-out along East 88th Avenue. Adding this strip to the city's sidewalk network will contribute to the city's greater goal of creating a comprehensive pedestrian and bicyclist trail network. It also improves pedestrian access to open space and the Rocky Mountain Arsenal. The site plan also shows on the east of the property a new detention pond. Adding this detention pond will benefit the community because it improves local and regional stormwater drainage connectivity while also preserving the open space nearby for pedestrian access. By way of background and why we are here tonight, as noted in the staff report, the Nexus North at DIA PUD was approved in 2019 to create a planned development that primarily allowed the following four uses: industrial distribution, warehouse, flex campus, and office land uses. Nexus North was intended to serve as a regional community employment and commercial center, taking advantage of its strategic location relative to other distribution centers, a strong transportation network, and proximity to Denver International Airport. The PUD has been amended twice, as noted on the slide, but it's remained within the framework originally set out, and it's been a fantastic success. Since the approval of the original PUD, Becknell has constructed two successful developments, leased to companies, some of which Jake mentioned, that are household names, among them Amazon, GE Appliances, and Lowe's. These projects have brought anywhere from 100 to 200 jobs per building, providing both short-term construction employment and long-term job opportunities to the community. At the time that the original PUD was approved, it allowed warehousing and distribution uses by right in Planning Area One, and it allowed those uses with a conditional use permit in Planning Area Two, which just referred to the balance of the development. The PUD did not allow warehousing and distribution in Planning Area Three. The reason for this was to mitigate potential adverse impacts on the Buffalo Highlands and Second Creek Farm subdivisions. However, it's been determined that open space and not residential uses are the most appropriate for these immediately adjacent areas. Of course, there is further away some residential development to the north and northeast. This eliminates the primary reason that warehouse and distribution were not originally allowed in Planning Area Three. This brings us to the substance of the PUD amendment request. This amendment does two very targeted things. First, it includes warehousing and distribution as a use by right in Planning Area Three. Becknell hopes that by extending a small subset of uses into Planning Area Three, uses that are already allowed everywhere else in the Nexus North Development, that it can attract the type of businesses that are most interested in locating in this location. General warehouse and distribution are in demand and are the highest and best uses for this property. Since February 2022, Becknell has marketed Planning Area Three nationwide to a variety of potential tenants. However, there has been no serious interest based on the uses allowed today. Warehousing and distribution uses are also consistent with the uses allowed on P3 today, which include manufacturing, wholesale, and other related uses. These added uses are also typical for light industrial areas and consistent, as we've mentioned, with the other uses in Nexus North, all of which have developed with some component of warehouse and distribution. The second change from this PUD amendment is to remove the maximum front yard setback of 100 feet. This will allow the building configuration to better screen the building itself as well as commercial traffic, and it will allow the building to be oriented with loading docks to the south, which again are the opposite direction of the closest residential areas. Note that all traffic other than emergency vehicles that enter and exit Nexus North do so at the signalized intersection at Tower Road, and nothing in the proposal would change that traffic pattern or how the roadways are used. The traffic pattern for the site, including the development of Planning Area Three, remain the same with the entry to the south, and any work on 88th Avenue is only related to that pedestrian path that we talked about earlier. This slide is a blow-up of the land use table in the Nexus North PUD document itself, and the circled Rs indicate really the substantive change of this amendment, which we think the subtlety accurately captures sort of the precision of the change that's being sought today. Because the primary purpose of the amendment is to extend uses already allowed throughout the development, this amendment is truly minor in nature. In order for the Planning Commission to recommend approval of the PUD amendment, it must find that the application meets all of the relevant PUD Zone Document criteria, of which there are eight of them. We provide a cover letter that went into great detail on how this application meets each of these criteria, and in addition, the staff report provides its own analysis, which we concur with. As such, we are not going to repeat each of these. However, we would like to add some additional color on three of these criteria. The first of those is Criteria A, which requires that the PUD amendment be consistent with the policies and goals of the comprehensive plan, as well as any other applicable area plan or community plan. The staff report notes that the subject property is within the DIN Gateway District Character Area, as identified in the comprehensive plan. Warehousing and distribution is a primary land use in these areas. The proposed changes are further consistent with the economic development framework goals for airport employment areas. We would add that the PUD amendment supports additional community goals, as outlined in the comprehensive plan, including goals related to commerce and employment. Wholesale trade is one of the city's top economic sectors, and the comp plan encourages the city to support its critical employment source and as a driver of the economy. This amendment also supports parks, open spaces, and natural environment goals. A key community benefit to the buildout of Planning Area Three is the development of that multimodal path along 88th Avenue, which will ultimately connect to the envisioned walk-bike-fit plan and become a key section of this infrastructure. It also supports goals related to public facilities and infrastructure. The public facilities and infrastructure, roads, and necessary for the development of this property are already in place. Encouraging development here by approving the PUD amendment will require substantially less construction activity, environmental disturbance, and resources than might be required if this were to be developed elsewhere. Moving on to Criteria B, the PUD amendment must be consistent with any previously reviewed PUD concept schematic. The PUD schematic for Nexus North was reviewed by staff and Planning Commission in 2018. While some aspects of the PUD have changed over time, as we've talked about, the proposed amendment to allow warehouse and distribution land uses and eliminate the maximum front yard setback is consistent with how this development has been envisioned from the beginning, which has been to create a regional employment center that can accommodate airport-related uses, including warehouse and distribution. And then finally, we'd mention Criteria I, which the amendment must address unique situation, confer substantial benefit to the city, or incorporate creative design in a way that achieves the purposes set out in the Code Section about PUD zone districts. And one of those purposes is that it promote economical and efficient land use and harmonious groupings. And we just note again that by extending warehouse and distribution uses to Planning Area Three, it will allow the entire development to develop harmoniously and keep consistent and grouped similar land uses. As to the remainder of the criteria, we defer to our previously submitted letter as well as to the staff report. In conclusion, this application is consistent with all of the PUD Zone Document approval criteria and also a logical adjustment to the existing PUD and development to complete Nexus North. As such, we respectfully request your recommendation of approval and are here and available to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have Dalton Gera make his presentation.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Dalton Gera. I'm a city planner with the Commerce City Planning Division. Tonight's case is for a PUD amendment to allow warehouse, distribution land uses, and eliminate the maximum front yard setback for Planning Area Three for a planning area that's approximately 21 acres. The red outline shows you the Nexus North at DIA Tech Center PUD at large. So you'll notice there are three existing warehouse buildings. Directly to the west is the Rocky Mountain National Wildlife Refuge, and then to the north and the east are floodplain areas from Second Creek. And then there's a mention of residential properties in the area to the northeast. Just to note, though, that those are at least... Just to note, though, that those are at least 1,000 feet away from the subject parcel. So the area in question in the subject property that will be affected by this amendment is Planning Area 3 specifically, which is this area hatched in the northwest corner of Nexus North at DIA Tech Center. It is currently vacant, but as mentioned, there are existing warehouses surrounding it. So again, this planning area is the only area of this PUD being affected by this proposed amendment. So here's a look at the land use table. Again, the clouded Rs in the column titled PA3 are changing from NA to R, meaning they're going from not allowed to permitted by right. And those three land uses are produce, storage, and warehousing, retail sales in conjunction with warehouse establishments, and warehouse and storage general. In the comprehensive plan, the character area for this area is identified as Denver Gateway District. And one of the primary land uses in this character area is warehousing and distribution. And one of the goals of this area is to support land uses that benefit from the large land area in this area and the proximity to the airport and easy access to the interstate. So warehouse and distribution is a supported land use for this character area. And digging deeper into the comprehensive plan, the economic development framework identifies it as a airport employment area, and that's aiming to support industrial and business development, again, trying to leverage the proximity to the airport and also building on the existing economic assets, so the economy out there that's already existing as warehouse and distribution land uses near the airport. The second part of the request for the amendment is to eliminate that maximum front setback for Planning Area 3, where it used to be 100 feet. The proposal is to not have a maximum standard. And the reason for that, again, is to provide better site design. If that maximum 100-foot setback still existed, this building could not be as far north as it is here on the site plan. It would be restricted and pulled south towards that cul-de-sac and just wouldn't really provide any constructive site design. So with that maximum setback eliminated, the building gets pushed further north. The bay doors for trucks and traffic stay facing south away from that residential to the northeast that was mentioned earlier. A couple of other things on the site plan, the onsite detention pond to the east, and also the trail that's being proposed to the arsenal along the north side, south of 88th Avenue. And again, just want to reiterate that there is no truck or vehicle traffic that will be coming into this site from 88th Avenue. All traffic would be coming from the south on Quintero Street. The only thing that is going north to 88th Avenue is an emergency access, but again, that is only for emergency access, not for truck or vehicle traffic. This amendment was reviewed by our relevant development review team agencies. And just in a little analysis on the site, the primary access, again, is to the south from Quintero Street. There's an onsite detention pond being provided, and site improvements in the future will include a new building surfacing and landscaping that will be reviewed at a future time when we get a PUD permit if this amendment is approved. Some considerations for discussion. Planning Area 3 is the only vacant property remaining in this PUD. Every other lot within the Nexus North PUD has been developed as a warehouse and distribution land use, so it's consistent, this proposal, with what's existing on the ground today. There will be no truck or vehicle access along East 88th Avenue. All that traffic will come from the south off of Quintero Street. Eliminating that maximum front yard setback standard will allow for better site design once we get that formal application. That was just a conceptual plan being shown to show what that means. And then the Nexus North, DIA tech standards, there are design standards associated with this PUD that the subject property would be subject to once we get to the development plan stage. There's been no public comment received to this point, and staff does recommend approval of the proposed PUD amendment. So for Criteria A, essentially describing that the proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and as I've identified, the, not only but the character area supports this primary land use, but also the economic development framework and other goals within the comprehensive plan are supportive of a primary land use of warehouse and distribution. The concept schematic, again, was reviewed in 2018, and although the PUD has changed over time, the original intent is still being met with the proposed amendment, being that the land use is supported by the comprehensive plan. The PUD needs to address a unique situation and provide a substantial benefit to the city, and this PUD originally was approved in 2019, so it met this criteria when it was originally approved, and as it's amended over time and has not lost the intent or the goals or policies, just that planning areas themselves have shifted around in the boundaries. So staff does believe that in addition to the PUD amendment, the design standards that regulate development in this PUD will also help provide a substantial benefit to the city and provide a unique development that can't be achieved otherwise. The PUD does meet all the applicable city standards. It's been reviewed by our engineering team, by our public works team, economic development, and our planning division also is obviously reviewed it against our land development code. So all applicable city standards have been met. The PUD needs to be integrated and connected with adjacent development. There's existing roadway networks within the Nexus North PUD, and so none of that will be changed as part of this amendment. All the traffic, as mentioned, will flow through that existing roadway network out to Tower Road, and none of it will go through East 88th Avenue. And further, there will be a trail provided along this property into the National Wildlife And mitigating any potential significant adverse impacts on the surrounding area. Again, some of the examples are having the bay doors facing south, not allowing any of the truck or vehicle traffic along 88th Avenue. Those are just some of the examples of how this potential development would mitigate those concerns if the PUD amendment is approved. Sufficient public safety, transportation, and facilities and, excuse me, infrastructure has to be provided as well. And again, this has been reviewed by our development review team, so we've referred this to our engineering team, our public works team, the fire department, as well as our power and utility companies, and none of them had any issues with the proposed PUD amendment. So they do believe that this development could be served. This criteria speaks to the phasing plan. There is no phasing plan. They would develop this if this PUD amendment's approved, the development would go in in one phase. And finally, that this development couldn't be accomplished through any other techniques. A PUD amendment really is the only way to accomplish getting this land use approved, and so that is why this request is here in front of you tonight. And with that, I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gera. Are there any questions for the applicant from any of the commissioners?
Just...
Commissioner Sanchez.
Thank you. Oh, what is the current character of the area directly north of the subject property?
Sure, thank you for that question. So directly to the north, let's see if I can get a better picture. There we go. Directly north of 88th Avenue is passive open space. It's in the Second Creek Floodplain, so it will not be developed with anything. It's just going to remain open space.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Ingleson.
North of that, isn't that where the new park's going in? Next to Buffalo Highlands?
There may be. I do not know for sure, though.
Yeah, the big city park. How far is the building from the sidewalk on the north side?
It looks to be about 100 feet.
Okay. So the setback in the north side is okay. It's the setback on the south side.
Correct, yeah. It was not going to meet the original standard for a maximum setback of 100 feet, which means it would have had to be at least 100 feet from the south property line. It couldn't be any further than that.
Right, and that's car parking on the north, and then that's going to be, what do you call it?
The truck parking and staging would be to the south, yes.
Yeah. Do you know what company might be going in there?
Jake, are you able to weigh in on that?
No, not at this time. There has been interests, but nothing at this time to report in terms of a tenant. We are actively seeking but need this PUD amendment to go through in order to secure some of those tenants.
Okay. All right, that's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
And then I just have a general question for staff, just in the long term, just thinking about this. Is there any long-term plans to vacate portions or a portion of 88th or Buckley?
That's a good question. I do not know of any plans in the immediate future. I don't know if our engineer that's in the audience today has any color on that. Mr. Lee Alversen?
To my knowledge, there's no intent to vacate East 88th Avenue.
Last chance, any other questions? All right, seeing none. Do any members of the public wish to provide comments on this case? Seeing no one at the dais or at the podium, is there anyone attending virtually tonight who wishes to speak?
There is no one that signed up beforehand, and no one has raised their hand.
All right. At this time, I will now close the public hearing for this case. Is there any additional discussion from the commission? Seeing none, can we please have a motion?
I move...
Go ahead.
Go ahead, okay. I move that the Planning Commission enter a finding that the requested PUD zone document amendment for the property located 17010 East 88th Avenue, contained in case PUDA 25-0002, meets the criteria of the Land Development Code with conditions, and based upon such findings, recommend that the city council approve the PUD amendment.
Do we have a second?
A second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Schechter and a second by Commissioner Ingleson. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, can we please open electronic voting? The motion passes. Five yeses, zero no's, zero abstain. I'd like to congratulate the applicant on the success of your case.
Thank you very much.
Is there any commission business to discuss at this time? Commissioner Sanchez?
Yeah, I just had a question for staff. We had a proposal that was postponed from Oakwood coming before us two or three months ago. Is there something still working there, or is something we should expect in the future? Can you tell us anything about that?
That's going to be going to, coming back to Planning Commission in October. They're working through the development agreement issues with the attorney's office, so it can't come back until then, and it can't go to council until November 17th because the agendas are full, and so that's why it's pushed out to October and November.
Any other business? Is there any attorney business to discuss at this time?
No, Chair.
Thank you. Is there any staff business to discuss at this time?
We just have a couple dates for you to put in your calendars. Upcoming on August 5th at your regular meeting, we've invited the city council to have a joint study session with you all to talk about the Land Development Code, specifically to talk about the development comments that we've received from the development community and the revisions that we made to the code in response to those comments. And then on September 2nd at Planning Commission, that will be the public hearing on the Land Development Code, and also the Transportation Master Plan is coming to you on September 2nd as well. Back on August 5th, you have two development cases that night, so what we envision doing is having one hour for the joint study session with council and then convening the Planning Commission after that at 7 o'clock. So you will have other, it'll be kind of a long night on August 5th, if you can pencil that into your calendars. The Land Development Code goes to city council on October 6th and for first reading and public hearing, and then second reading on the Land Development Code at council will be November 3rd. One final item, the city's in the process of working on a housing needs assessment. We have a consultant that's engaged that's working through that housing needs assessment, and they're going to be reporting to council on September 22nd. So that's a study session night at council. We could ask to make that a joint meeting and invite the Planning Commission, or you could just attend or watch online if you want to learn more about the housing needs assessment. Any thoughts on that?
Personally, I'd like to attend. I find that actually getting at raw data really helpful. Yeah.
Chairman Hugheson?
I think I'd like to make a joint. That way, we can interact, we can ask questions, and if it's not a joint session, we just get to listen.
Uh huh, okay.
I agree with that.
Okay, we'll ask that we make that a joint meeting with Planning Commission and city council on September 22nd.
Thank you.
And that's all the updates that I have.
Thank you. The time is now 6:42, and the meeting is adjourned.